Ms. Conoco, second by Dr. Morphy. I know it lost me, but we have agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions on your new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you were referring to in your question.
Jen Park, Sixth Avenue Drive. I have a question regarding Agenda Item S, which is the district goals. So my question is, well, I have a couple of questions. I know with the rules, just asking one. So my main question is, how come goals for the 2018-2019 school year being voted upon in December of 2018? I was just wondering if this is normal practice or like the cases?
It is a great question, Ms. Park. We told the board about these on the Friday notes, which is the information that I sent home to them in Friday prior to a board meeting in September. And so although they were aware of them, and they were put together by our administrative staff during the summer, I neglected to put them on the agenda. So the board was aware, our administrators certainly are aware, have developed building goals that address the district goals, but it was my oversight.
Thank you. Could you tell me if these goals are going to impact the assessment and evaluation of the circulation checkout, or are these goals created back in the summertime and they're just now being on the agenda?
The latter part of your question.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Evelyn Flotbauer, 43rd and Head Place. So my question is regarding the same item, and I just wanted to know, the federal government just came out with Charting a Course for Success: America's Strategy for STEM Education, a report by the committee on STEM education of the National Science and Technology Council in December of 2018. And I wanted to know if that would be taken a look at and some of the ideas and some of the programs that they discuss would be considered going forward with these goals?
We'll certainly take a look at it. It just came out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Schoen, have a report for us this evening?
I do. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, I wasn't looking for that. It is wonderful to see all of you here. I know why certainly most of you are here this evening, and there is no better way than to spend a Wednesday night in the Mawa Board of Education offices honoring the teachers and the staff members that deserve it the most. So I know our exec was a little bit long tonight. Our apologies, we had a bunch to cover, but we did. Thank you for waiting. It will be well worth your while, and it will be remembered fondly for a long time by the staff members you're here to support.
Hi.
Hi.
As we watch these videos, what's really important to know is that all of the questions or the interviewing of parents or staff members or students is not planned. So everything that is showcased here is all from a very authentic, honest, candid place, which makes it that much more valuable. I see former students in the audience, I see retirees, staff members and their families. Thank you for being here.
So let's begin. Our first honoree today, staff member choice, is Christine Noonan. Christine Noonan, everybody clap! Christine Noonan has worked in our district for 14 years. As the main office secretary at Betsy Ross School, Christine is truly passionate about her job. Through her work, Christine demonstrates her care for every child, family, and staff member, supporting and informing them regularly. She takes great pride in all that she does, and Betsy Ross is honored that Christine is the first to face staff, students, and visitors see every day.
I've been at Betsy Ross for 13 and 14 years, but I knew about it, that it was a special place because my kids both went there. When the principal called and said there was a power position open, I wasn't sure I was really wanting to do it, if I could do it, so I took the position. I was in Karen Johnson's room, which is the best place to start. Learned so much from her. I was in the classroom for a few years, and then I moved into the office, which was a totally different role. Then when the secretary retired, I took her position. And that's where I've been for the past, I guess, four years, five years.
I've worked with Christine in a power role, as well as in the office, now for 13 years. And Chris, for me, has always been a doer. If you ask her anything, even if she doesn't know at that time, she'll get the answer and she'll always follow up.
She just automatically felt like home for me. She was overly friendly with a new, you know, a new staff member. And I went from being a parent to being the math specialist to now being a kindergarten teacher, and she's always made sure that I have, you know, A through Z when I need it and for whatever I need it for.
In her dealings with the HSO, such as like the Walk-a-Thon, she is instrumental in securing everything that anybody needs, whether it's a location, whether it's information, whether it's, you know, assigning people where they need to be or at what time. She's just really diligent and very organized, but most importantly, fun and easy to be around.
I do lots of things. Deal with all the teachers, who are the best teachers in the world, are. The kids come in and out. I think Betsy Ross is different from a lot of buildings because the principal's office, our office, and the nurse's office are all connected. So there's a lot of activity all day long. The teachers are coming in and out for the mailboxes, the kids are coming in and out, going to the nurse, they have to walk past my desk so I get to see the kids all day, and, you know, it's just busy, you know? I enjoy it.
It makes that whenever I go up to go to the nurse or something, she always says hello to me.
The voice telling me we go. I'm so happy. Whenever I walk up there, she's always has a smile on her face.
So the children are so funny, because most of them can't even really see over her desk. So when they walk in, there's like this little head, you know? And she sits there, she's like, "How can I help you?" And it could be anything from a bruise or a bump, where if Mrs. McGuire's not here, she's going in and she's giving the ice pack and she's getting the Band-Aid for them.
Linda is unbelievable. She's so easy to work with. I've learned a lot from her. I just think, I think we do make, we get along very well. I think we're on the same page with a lot of things. And she's just, she makes this building better by the way she runs it.
She keeps all of the drama and the things that don't need to cloud my day away from me. And then she'll tell me in a really nice way around 3:30, "Hey, this happened, but it's okay, we did this, this, and this." And so she just is that person that, she really is everything to me in this school, because she makes my day a heck of a lot easier. And I know that, and I know there's things that she does that I don't even know about, just to make my day go smoother.
So a couple of weeks ago, as many teachers do, I did have a bit of a meltdown, and I was having a really, really rough time. And I went into the office, and she just looked at me and just embraced me in this big hug. And she didn't really, she didn't ask too many questions, but she knew that I needed her in a different role than I ever needed her before, and she was completely capable of being that person for me.
Like I said, I love this building. I think it's a very special place, and I think the people that work here is what makes it. I actually enjoy coming to work every day. I think we have a lot of fun, we laugh a lot, and I think the kids just keep it. I mean, even when you're having a bad day, the kids make you smile, so.
Congratulations, you've succeeded. It's time for that hug. You got to stand up. You're going to clap again.
Can I hug her first?
Of course.
Thank you. As Debbie's being tested, I don't want to speak in front of them. Thank you all very much.
All right, our next staff highlight is Patty Simons. Patty, good morning.
Patty's been a teacher at George Washington School for 22 years. With a passion for teaching, Patty has proven that with hard work, dedication, and love for her students, every student can be successful. Patty's enthusiasm for teaching and learning is contagious, and her impact on our students and colleagues is immeasurable. Although GW is her home, Patty's reach has extended far beyond the walls of George Washington School. She has served as a mentor, a teacher leader, and trainer for many colleagues across the district. We're thrilled to acknowledge Patty for her dedication to our students, unwavering support of colleagues, and willingness to be great.
I started out after high school. I was an acting directing major at Moncler State College, and I enjoyed it, but I just realized that it wasn't going to be me. I went to work for Ramsey Schools for a year and a half as a food service director. Lovely, lovely district. Then a friend of mine called me from Macy, a Bamberger's at the time, and said, "There's a job posting at Mawa, wanted to take a look at it." So I came over, I interviewed, and I got the job. It was very business oriented, but it was also, I got to work with the kids, and when there were, some of the workers were asked, and I was with the little schools and working the little schools. And so I'd go to work and I'd start rolling, and then I'd run over to the little school, cook the lunch, serve the lunch, run the register, clean up, come back, and do the rest of my work. And the best part about it was like working with those little kids. And I started to feel like that was a thing that I was, I needed to take a look at, you know, more closely. And I had said to the administrators at the time, "It was too soft for Murray Blue Glass," and Ed Up To Alliance said, "I would love to teach, but I just don't know how to go about it." So I was also interviewing for chef teacher jobs. I figured that if I couldn't teach little kids, I could at least teach what I knew. The gentleman at the board office said to me, "I don't see you doing that. I see you crawling around on the ground with kids." That's what it's do say. That cracked me up, but I felt it too. And one of my poor colleagues got stuck with me, but we worked it out, I learned, and then I was able to go alternate route because they, again, they were so good to me. And I got my own first grade class in this very room, and that's where it started.
She's amazing.
She's amazing. Patty works so hard. She is one of the hardest workers I know. She devotes every moment of every day to what she does here at school, whether it's teaching other adults or teaching students. She is always here, her car is here at 7 o'clock in the morning, she's always one of the last ones here at night. I think she has really devoted everything for this profession.
And she has this warmth about her that like, anyone, whether you're a best friend or you're a new person in the building, she kind of instantly makes that connection with you, and you just fall in love with her immediately.
Kindergartners are, oh my gosh, they're so much fun. I just started teaching when we went to full day. And every grade level has something special, and I'm lucky enough that I get to see some kids more than one year. I'm also lucky that, I think my kids work very, very hard, and they, they love coming to reading, but they know that they're here for a reason, they get it, and they apply themselves, and they put that, they put that effort forth.
She likes peacocks. We, um, she brings words home so then we could read at home.
Patty and I get to talk almost every day, and Patty always comes in with such an amazing attitude and positive attitude. And one day in a conversation, I asked her about that. I said, "Patty, hadn't you really kept that positive attitude all the time? Come in motivated and enthusiastic every morning?" And she says something, and she said, "That that moment when a child starts to read is really a magical moment." And when I thought about that and reflected on that, it just made so much sense, because Patty in many ways is a reading magician. You know, she goes into that bag of tricks she has, and she pulls out a strategy or a teaching method, and ultimately, these kids who are struggling readers get that ability to read.
But I just cannot say enough about this staff, my friends, my colleagues, also the children of this school. You know, I know a lot of, I've been here for so long that I know a lot of the families and older siblings, and that's a really comforting feeling to have that history so that when a little brother or sister comes in, I can say, "Oh my gosh, how's so-and-so doing?" Or, you know, "How's your dog Sadie?" And not laugh.
Everything cracks her up. She's so positive that the doors are open and you hear this big laughter coming down the hall, and it makes us laugh in the middle of teaching, and the kids have no idea why.
Right. You can hear her laugh anywhere in the building. And no matter what you're doing at what moment, you just have to stop and smile because that's Patty.
It took me a minute!
Would you like to say something, Patty?
Yes, she does.
Okay.
Of course, I say a lot. No, I'm very, very lucky to be chosen for this because there are so many amazing teachers in this district and in George Washington School. And I'm so grateful, and I'm so grateful to everybody who came and to my family and friends. This is the best district in the world.
Okay, our next staff highlight is dedicated to Debbie Benvenuto. Debbie is a motivating, engaging, and dedicated educator. These are words that are often heard to describe educators, but when we speak of Debbie, those words speak even louder. Debbie works collaboratively with homeroom teachers of the students that she services. She is known to think outside of the box, to make sure that her students are learning by using a variety of teaching realities. Lenneth B. Meadows often refers to Debbie as their very own Bob the Builder, either by building relationships with students and colleagues or repairing a broken shelf. We are very proud to honor Debbie this evening.
I came to Mawa in 1998. I went to University of Buffalo and then Bus State. And I got my first teaching job in a rural salt mining community. I worked there for two years, and I just wanted to come back home. I decided that I was gonna maybe substitute around this area and see, you know, if I could find a job. And I substituted at Betsy Ross. On the board, there was the posting for a part-time position. And so at lunch, after I finished my morning of substituting, I went home and grabbed my guitar, and I came back, and I went into Kathy Bennett, who was the principal at the Times' office, and I played her a "Hire Me" song, doing that tune that I knew. And she was like, "You're nuts." But I like you, let's get you in for an interview. So that's how it all came about.
When we talk about students being well-rounded and trying to get them to be well-rounded individuals, I think about Debbie being that well-rounded teacher, because she always thinks outside the box when it comes to instructing her students and getting them engaged and to learn what she is trying to teach them.
She thinks of ideas for her students when other ideas might not work. She's willing to try anything to get a student to learn, and I think that's one of the things that's most special about her.
So I guess I nominated Debbie when I saw your email. She was like the first person that I thought of, and I think that's mostly because I've worked so closely with her over the past few years. She is one of those people, she has this very, honestly, she's like vivacious, she has a passion. I think a lot of people say they have a passion for learning, but she really does, and she shows it. She will play the guitar, dance, do anything she has to do to get a kid to learn a new skill. She has like a Mary Poppins bag, like her carpet bag of tulip. You can look around her room and you'll probably see some of her stuff that she'll try with kids, just to get them to learn a skill. And those are some things you can't always teach. I think it's just in her. She's innovative, she's extremely creative, and kids love coming to her class. There's so many wonderful things about Debbie. She is honestly one of the most generous people that I've ever met. She's generous with her time, with her ideas, and anything she can do to help you. She's also one of the most positive people I've ever worked with. She always has wonderful things to say about everybody, and the glass is always half-full with Debbie.
They come in here, they feel comfortable, they're away from all their peers, they, they just shine, and I just can't wait to witness that. When I come through the door here, it's refreshing. My life kind of stays outside. Any problems, you know? When I come in, Dorothy's like, "Hey, Devs!" You know, she puts an S on the end of my name, and I'm like, "Oh, that's so cool." Like she needs that, she's welcoming. Wherever I go into, I see a shining face, the staff, the kids. I would say that that's probably one of the best parts about working here.
One of the things for me, now that I know you've heard for over a year, Debbie cares about everybody else more than she cares about herself. She just goes the extra mile that if you need something, she'll have it for you the next day. She's literally willing to give you the coat off of her back.
Not that she wears one, but she's always gone outside, inside, it really doesn't matter to Debbie, but she thinks of everyone all the time. It's very selfless of her.
She's very kind and loving, and I can go on and on, honestly.
Like when I'm writing so fast, she always talks to me that way. That way I don't make mistakes, 'cause I'm writing so fast. She always has it on her face.
She's a jack-of-all-trades, and I mean that literally again, because not only is she a teacher, she can like do sheet rock. And she brings all of this stuff to her teaching, because she has so much life experience. So she's enriching the kids by her life experience, too. So Debbie's great. Like I said, Debbie really thinks outside the box. And one day she came in, she always has tools in her classroom. And beginning of the year, when I just moved into my new classroom, she came in with her toolkit, and she said, "I have a great idea. I'm gonna take this shelf off where we keep the cubbies, and we're gonna turn it into a couch for the kids." It's always ideas like that that I truly appreciate and just really love about her.
Everyone makes it a point with everyone else to know, like really know you. And I've never had that anywhere else, anywhere I've worked my whole life, and it's been a long journey. So coming here is a highlight, not just of my job, it's the highlight of my life.
Congratulations, Devs!
Thank you all so much. I can't believe that you would honor me in this way. I feel like I'm the blessed person. I mean, I am. I get to come here to this place that's been my home for 20 years, to hear all those wonderful things that people said about me. I just can throw them right back at everyone, and thank you so much.
Our next staff highlight is from Joyce Kilmer School, Bob Ruffo. Can you stand up so we make sure you're here?
He's there.
Oh, there you are. Hi, Bob. Bob Ruffo has been a dedicated teacher for 21 years. 18 of the 21 years have been in the Mawa Public School District. Colleagues and administration characterize Bob as helpful, supportive, and highlight particularly his authentic love for students. Bob not only has spent his teaching career in Mawa, but he also experienced the Mawa school system as a student himself. Mr. Ruffo is often touted as being a leader amongst his colleagues, as well as a balanced presence in the classroom that consists of a kindness, a sense of humor, and also a diligent work ethic.
Hi, my name's Bob Ruffo. I'm a fifth grade teacher here at Joyce Kilmer School. I teach math and science. I work with, Mrs. McClanahan is my dyad teacher. I grew up in Mawa, on Tammashander Drive, where my father still lives. Mrs. McClanahan also grew up on Tammashander Drive. I went to Betsy Ross. Hell, we went to Calhoun or Perry, because there was a few years, it was 2008. So Mawa's a very special place. I jumped at the chance to come to Joyce Kilmer School. It was one of my favorite memories, it was one of my favorite schools when I was a child. And to be here every single day, it's like, it's wonderful.
Bob is one of a kind. He's the most genuine individual. He's so animated, and he holds everyone's attention, whether it's through jokes, he sings, he dances, he keeps the children interested and excited.
I think they also trust him tremendously, just like we do. He can come up with so many wonderful ideas and so many contributions to make things work. I know that if I speak with him, we're either gonna have creative moments where we come up with new ideas, we argue and discuss things out, there's not a fence, but in the end, you know that what he has said, he is true to. And that, I think the kids appreciate that also. They know that their teacher is on their side.
I think the first time I met Bob was in the summertime, and he was telling me how he does bottle rockets, and he wanted to invite me up to the field to go see him with the students with the bottle rockets. And the first time I saw him, the kids were so excited about these rockets that shoot up into the air, and he was so excited about it, and I thought that was fantastic, and I was really excited to get to his classroom.
When you walk into Mr. Ruffo's class, you can't do anything but smile, and he has such a great connection with his kids. I recently was in there, and I had a chance to observe him with his student of the day. And the children are so excited to be selected students of the day. They run the class, he oversees it, and he really connects with them.
I've never grown beyond fifth grade. I understand the pain very well. I understand the trials and tribulations they go through. I've also seen the metamorphosis from, you know, a non-digital society into the digital society, and I think this is the grade I can be most effective at.
Yeah, he does like fun things, like he, in math, he includes like math games, like Quizmo and like Name That Number, we'll bring the rockets at the end of here.
He's a very nice teacher, like he understands to tell people like what to do, and if they don't understand something, he will work with them separately. And he always gives us free time on Fridays, which is very nice.
I love that he's so humble. I mean, I work with him, and he tries to give me credit for everything that goes on in that classroom, and, you know, he is, he just does it all.
Anything you need from Bob, you can count on Bob, or you need from anybody. If somebody's absent and I need a spot covered, Bob will just be like, "Okay, I got it, no problem." That's just the type of personality he is. If you need him, he's there.
He is very passionate about the idea of students creating things with their hands, and when you watch him and listen to him talk about it, you see actually like this twinkle in his eyes, you know? And he's so passionate about expressing it. It's really been an incredible thing, whoever's been able to be a part of it. Not just the children putting this rocket together from beginning to end, but the day they actually are setting off their rockets is just remarkable.
Oh, I think I'm an integral part of the community. I mean, we work as a fifth grade team, everybody gets along, we work as a fifth grade math and science team. We help out. If there's anything that needs to be done, grade level-wise or school level-wise, I'm always a volunteer. I've been on almost every committee since I've been in school, from everything from professional development to Atlas Rubicon to rewriting all the curriculum. So I'm very proud, very happy to be a very functional part of this community.
You know what I don't understand? Free Fridays. Well, you know what I'm talking about. I always pictured myself as like Burt Reynolds at the Free Fridays, but I look more like Dom Della.
Would you like to say something?
Of course you do.
You know, I work in the community, I work with the coaching, I work with Don Doria. I can't take this just for me.
I can't take this just for me. My co-teacher and my parent, Kelly, they dot my i's and cross my t's where I forget. Thank you.
Linda Walter, can you stand up so we know where you are? There you are!
Linda Walter is the embodiment of what it means to be part of the Ramapo Ridge family. She's spent her career teaching generations of young minds to not only love science, but perhaps even more importantly, to also be respectful and responsible young men and women. From the Disney World tapestries hanging on the classroom walls to the daily doses of sage-like vice, Ms. Walters created a classroom environment where the students are happy, confident, and are set up for success. Linda's selflessness for her students and her colleagues truly defines her career for those who have had her as a teacher and for those who have known her as a friend.
A teacher since I was three years old. And I remember watching Rumpa Room and watching that teacher and saying to myself, "I want to be just like that and work with all the children." And then I had two teachers who really made a difference in my life. I had a biology teacher when I was in ninth grade, who I just thought was the best thing that ever happened. And then I had another ninth-grade teacher, social studies teacher, which is my other certification. And he taught me that it's nice to be important, or more important, to be nice. And I never forgot that. And a couple of years ago, I found a plaque that has that, and I have it in the classroom.
When I first came on board, Linda was in a lot during the summer, and I was able to have some good conversations with her. And I knew right away how welcoming she must be to our sixth-grade students every year that she was that welcoming to me. I sense that she just has a wealth of information to share. I also realized right away in my early conversations with her that her heart's in the right place, and she's very passionate about what she does.
The time she spends with the students beyond the normal school day is really commendable. Like Brian said, NJHS, the school play, you know, staying after school, helping kids. It's really quite amazing to have, to, really, we're very lucky to have such an educator with us.
I think Linda, as a teacher, is way ahead of where we've always talked about the whole child. Linda's been doing that for years. There's rarely a time that I come in here where Linda doesn't have the kids get up and say, you know, "Good morning, Mr. Jarvis." It's all about character development with Linda, above and beyond the teaching part of it, too, where the kids are taught to be respectful, they're taught to talk to adults, they're taught to have a level responsibility.
When you say, "What do you teach?", she teaches kids. You know, she teaches science, but she teaches kids. It's the whole package. She takes a lot of pride in what she does, I would say. And it's not limited to just our department, but I work with her also in the play. She's the director and on the stage crew director. Linda's working with so many different facets of the school at all times, and I think works well with everybody.
She takes the lead even on social things within the department. If there's an event, something special happening for someone, Linda's always the one that steps up and says, "Let's get together, let's do this." You know, she's kind of very motherly. She's a leader and a good example and a team player.
I've always been a very giving person, a very caring person, a very empathetic person. And I thought, "What better way than to be a teacher where I can hopefully make a difference in the lives of the kids?" I think content is important, but I think teaching to the whole child and letting them grow into the person that they can be socially and emotionally and academically, there's nothing better than that.
Everything that she gives beyond the classroom, I think, speaks to the educator that she is.
She sets the bar very high, is a colleague, someone to strive to look up to.
Sometimes in the summer, you know, Linda's a very big Disney enthusiast. She will send me pictures of what she's doing, or FaceTime, or something like that when she's at the parks. And I don't know, I always just kind of, like, oh, Linda, I always, when I think of Disney, as you can see in our room.
I love Disney, and I've been in the Indiana Jones stunt show, and I've also been in a catastrophe canyon stunt show, where they bring people from the audience to do stunt work and to do other things. I was chosen to be the screamer. So if there was something going on that was bad, I had to scream. And I got hit with about 20,000 gallons of water.
She's taught literally generations of the kids. I mean, back-to-school night, I joke for a while that she's like the mayor of Mawa. She knows the kids, she knows the brothers and sisters of the kids, she knows the parents, she's taught the grandparents. So she's taught most of the people that she attracts. And that's, you know, talking about generations of people that she's had an effect on, that's, that's something, so, so, that's a gift.
She's one of every teacher ever.
Yes, I always look forward to going to her class every day.
He really wasn't just science.
Yeah. And if you're having a bad morning, you can always look forward to going into the classroom. And I really liked her teaching style, too. Like, she explained things really well.
And the way that she explained them, you could really, like, understand it and relate to how she explained them.
Ramapo Ridge has always been a family. The kids are wonderful, the parents are wonderful. The administration that I've always worked with has been wonderful, and it's just such a happy place to be. Do your best, work hard, build relationships with families and with children, love what you do, never give up, laugh at yourself, and I think you'll be happy.
I would never have lost words in this speech.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Shall I stand?
Yes, he's probably the tallest person in this room.
Mr. Zandonella, can you stand and just wave to everyone?
Wait, Timmy.
There we go. Mike Zandonella is an outstanding special education teacher who has graciously served MHS for the last 31 years. He has completed most of his years teaching science with the Science Department as a collaborating teacher, reaching special education and general education students. He is loyal, always acts with integrity, and puts the needs of his students first. Mike has consistently assisted the school community by being a professional who has a genuine care that is rooted in professionalism and dependability.
My name is Mike Zandonella, and I've been a member of the Mawa High School faculty for 31 years. I always knew that there was a niche I would fall into as far as working with youth. My aunt, who lives in Mawa, as a matter of fact, who was not a sort of school teacher, suggested that rather than pursue a career in education following the phys ed route, my aunt said, "It's a very, very growing field called special education," I told her that. So I got a special ed degree. A job opening happens here. Bruce Siegel knew who I was. He likes to say, he took one look at me and hired me. I'd like to think that I had other qualifications other than my size. And the rest is history, as they say.
I've known Mike Zandonella for 29 years. He is our senior-most staff member in our building. Not in age, but in years of experience here at the high school. I first got to know Mike when my supervisor told me I was gonna be a collaborative science teacher. So Mike and I were collaborative teachers for a little bit of time. I've now been his principal for 17 years. Mike, for me, is a standout professional. The characteristic I really admire about Mike, you know, is his care for children, his ethics, and his honesty.
Mike is a gentle giant. He's super tall, but very sweet. He has a great relationship with the kids. The kids love him.
I totally agree with that. He comes off as he likes to think he's a little intimidating, but the kids know he's got a heart of gold. They take advantage of that.
He's definitely passionate about our students, so he goes above and beyond for them. When they need help, he's there.
He also keeps up with the students that have graduated, the alumni. There's always conversations that will happen on Monday, which I've heard about so-and-so, did you know this about so-and-so, which is great things. Still cares about them even though they've graduated.
When I first came here, Mike was ready to greet me. He's always a guy with a positive attitude. In many ways, I see Mike as a role model for many people in the building. He's a silent leader. Mike really has the best interest of kids at heart and is always willing to go the extra step to support kids in a classroom.
Kim, it's kind of a hard subject for most people. He'll explain it to you until you get it. Like, he won't just, like, explain it and then leave you to fail. Like, he always wants people to succeed.
I have, like, a tough time, like, in big classes like that. Like, we had a pretty big class. He would just be, like, very hands-on with it. And like, if I needed to come in at any time, like, after school lunch, like, he would always, like, even if he had something to do, like, he would clear it, like, so I could come in and he could help me out.
My niche in special ed comes from the way, I think, I analyze things. Because, I will freely admit, I was not class valedictorian, but I think I know how to learn. So when I see those blank expressions, and I don't smell smoke, I know that I need to say this a different way. We need to do this a different way, and that's key, the special ed. Will many of my students take a chemistry course beyond this?
Yes.
Will it benefit them beyond me teaching blister kids? I know bleach cleans things well, and I know ammonia does. Don't mix them together, because you'll breathe chlorine gas and hurt yourself. If they can take that away...
When you step into the classroom, into Mike's room, you just have a positive feel. It wouldn't be uncommon to hear him saying the elements of the periodic table out loud to the kids, coming up with some kind of crazy acronym for them to remember something. It really, it works out well. The kids love him, and overall, I'm super happy to, he's part of our team. In some ways, raises the bar for our department and is always able to support his colleagues.
There's a mother duck that goes into the courtyard, and Mike has taken upon himself to take care of this duck. He's done this for several years.
Approximately five or six years ago, while walking around the courtyard on lunchtime, I noticed a female duck and her duck legs. Unbeknownst to me, she had made a nest in one of the tall grasses. Pat Manella was a physics teacher here at the time, and I decided, all right, do an art prep. We can drop the doors open and scoot them out, which I did.
He comes on Saturdays to make sure that it has water, brings Cheerios, and then he makes sure that the mother duck has the eggs that hatch. He ushers them through the halls, out of the school, actually over towards central office.
Yes. I was thinking, I hope she stops doing that, because it is a distressing thing.
Over the years that I've known Mike, he's had some difficult children in class, and he's always willing to spend extra time with them after school. He'll work up labs with them on his own time. He could be here till, you know, four or five o'clock, working with a kid.
And also, like, I feel like he's, like, very personable. And like, if I was having, like, an issue even not in that class, like, I could talk to him about it, and like, he would give me advice or like, help me out with anything I was really going through. And like, that's really, really good to have in a teacher.
I love working with our kids, and they seem to have, you know, an affinity for me as well, because I look into, I may be the only adult in life that doesn't judge them harshly, that treats them with kindness and understanding. I think I fit that role for them in their lives.
Ducks?
Thank God they're eagles.
Good job. You deserve it.
Do you want to say anything to your fans?
Of course he does. I just want to thank everybody for coming.
Wait, 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 hold on.
I had submitted a Kiss picture, which I'm glad you didn't include, because I was gonna have to explain that not all middle-aged men who are Kiss fans live in their mothers' homes. But I want to thank colleagues who nominated me. I want to thank people who came from great distances to be here. I really appreciate it. Kids, thank you for coming. It's a great honor, and 30 years of Mawa, I couldn't think of any other place I'd rather be. A special thanks to my partner, Mr. Vitale, the other half of the BZ combo.
You want to dismiss everybody? Absolutely. As wonderful as it is to see all of you, it is a quarter after eight. You have families to return to. Thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you all for coming, and just to let you know that we have to continue with the meeting, so if you could, please just try to keep it down a little bit. You know, it's a lot of enthusiastic people. Hey, Mr. Quigley, do you have a meeting report for us this evening?
Okay, yes, I do, just say, hand full updates regarding student mission. The exterior brickwork is mainly damaged small, and will continue as long as by the end of the week. Also, work there was broken schedule. It's like we do openings in the schedule, we were having a good head out. The two of our models are here for permission. The lights also have to be on, and the entrances are on site. We should be doing so on this week. Steel supports are still roof decking, it's gonna be a little bit wet this week. Other way, I was just for the community as well as the board. We're buying another next board meeting, it's on January 24th. It's on Thursday night, so it's a little off schedule from our dorms and rooms. And I mean, holidays are very important, this is...
Mr. Fair, do you have anything for us this evening?
No.
Thank you very much. Okay, my report for this evening. 2018 All Eastern Chorus Oboe List. Olivia Leto, Aaron Lockwood, and Dante Mahia have been accepted into the 2019 All Eastern Courses. They will perform next April in Pittsburgh with 440 singers from Delaware to Maine. So congratulations to the singing T-birds. Bergen County Band results. Congratulations to the following Mawa High School band students on successfully auditioning and being accepted into the 2019 Bergen County Band. Maxwell Mahia for oboe, first chair. Matthew Slotbauer for trumpet. Joshua Segaria for trumpet. Juliet Corlis for horn. Gabriela Bisi Domini for trombone. Yedee Zee for mallet percussion, first chair. And also honorable mention should go to Jonathan Zhang, clarinet. Brendan Noda-Franesto, clarinet. And Erin Ryan, bass clarinet, each timed for alternate spots in the band. So congratulations to everyone. The Mawa Schools Foundation update, and a big thank you. The following fall grants were approved for full or partial funding. Hugh Robotics Exploration at Ramapo Ridge. Day and Clay at Lenape Meadows. Gaga Ball Pit at JK. Maker Space at JK. 3D printers. Steam Pathways Technology at the high school. Author Day Christopher Rabinstein at JK. And Author Day Amy Ludwig, Osmo Ambassador for GW. And then in other news, Mrs. Duffy from the Mawa Schools Foundation reported that they met with the MEA last week and are very excited to partner with them for our upcoming Thunderbird Run on 5/19/2019. They will be sponsoring the kid-run portion of the event. And this is very exciting to have our teachers involved with such a big part of our community day. Some more details will follow about the Thunderbird Run after the holidays. And I do want to wish happy holidays to those who have celebrated Hanukkah and those who will be celebrating Christmas. Happy Hanukkah to all, and Merry Christmas to all. Do we have any board committee reports this evening?
For policy, I'm 15K, second reading and adoption of 3282 and 4282, which again are, excuse me, use of social networking sites for teaching and support staff. And this was the one that we did a couple of months ago, and at the request of the MEA, that we reviewed and made some tweaks to the second reading and adoption.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Gallo?
I have a report from the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee met this past Monday to review the 2000 The finance committee met, uh, this past Monday to review the two thousand nineteen twenty budget schedule and also to set up meetings for our committee for basically from the middle of January to early March. Um, we also reviewed the business plan and preliminary cost projections for implementing the one-on-one, uh, computer initiative. Um, we reviewed a few of the capital projects that were deferred from last year, including the library window replacement, the concession stand, and security vestabules at the high school, JK and Lanape Meadows. Um, this passed at the twenty nineteen council meeting on the twenty ninth. Boswell Engineering and their traffic expert presented, uh, suggestions for safety upgrades at the bridge JK High School driveway intersection. Uh, we look forward to, uh, working with the council on moving forward on that as best as we can. And meanwhile, we'll be meeting, I think, with Boswell in the next couple of weeks to see what other initiatives or alternatives we have to, um, improve the safety of that intersection. For negotiations committee, we met on November twenty ninth, uh, with Kyle and Dennis to review the issues that we would think, uh, we'd like to advance with the MEA. And we also, uh, set up a date with the MEA to meet on, uh, next Monday, December seventeenth, to begin sort of an informal kickoff, sort of a team meeting, uh, situation. And I'm very thankful that the MEA, uh, carved out the time to do that for us. And we look forward to a productive and fruitful negotiation session.
Thank you very much.
Got one from the, uh, technology committee, just, um, coming up with what Mike said. We met last night with the various financing facility for the, uh, computers for the one-to-one, uh, deployment in the next school year. And then we met, uh, the technology committee standpoint to go over those computers. Um, and a laptop we're using in the high school as well as the ridge. Um, and it just brings up the point that it's, you know, two committees in two nights talking about this. And ultimately, it's going to be probably a couple more committees after that between policy and financing facilities. And a whole lot's going to go into this, um, to deploy the one-to-one in the high school, in the next school year. Um, as well as, as you'll see on, on the agenda in what fifteen Z with regards to the technology services with the level one, what we would like to bring in, which I think is a wonderful idea, which frees up our guys to, to get us ready for this. This is a huge undertaking, um, especially right out of the gate. So, uh, it's very exciting, but at the same time, it's, it's not a just give a kid a laptop and send him home and away. So the, the amount of things between curriculum, policy, technology, finance, I mean, it's going to be all inclusive between now and June, to have it ready for September. So it's very exciting.
Thank you.
From Bergen County School Boards, in front of all of you is a folder. Represents the latest legislative updates of both, uh, of the New Jersey, of New Jersey legislators. But it comes from, uh, school, uh, school boards, legislative committee, and Bergen County School Board leaves on. So I'm interested if you's happening here, each way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter.
Peter, any, uh, board member remarks or additional comments on any reports or other non-agenda items?
Um, on November twenty seventh, Peter, Linda and I attended the county school boards meeting and Peter allowed me to drive. Never again, never again. Um, there were two presentations at the, um, at the meeting. One was on educational opportunities for the non-college-bound learner. This is a recent, um, initiative of the New Jersey School Boards Foundation, Association. Um, and just speaking for myself, I see it as a very important, um, uh, issue of our times. It's an issue in education that's been a bit dormant for the past number of years. And, um, you know, the statistic that jumps out at me is that there are currently forty-four thousand jobs in New Jersey requiring high levels of skill that we're not training people to take and two million nationwide. So these are, um, issues that affect our economy, affect a lot of the of our students. Um, the second presenter was from the Asbury Park School District. And she spoke about the integration of mindfulness and, uh, social emotional learning initiatives in the Asbury Park District. She was a great speaker. But my takeaway was I was so happy to come from Mawa where we already have a very thorough and comprehensive program in this area. But it's always good to know that we're running with, uh, the leaders of the pack, so. Um, and just on a personal note, this is my final meeting of my first term in office. It's been, uh, a very interesting experience. I think I've grown in the, in my experience here. I won't be attending the first meeting in January. I'll be away. But I just wanted to thank all my board colleagues, all the administrative staff. This is, this is my run it over, right, Dan? But I just want to say thank you to all of you for your support and for the administration, all the support they've given us. And for the initiatives they've allowed us to make some progress on. So thank you. Did I exceed my five minutes? Why isn't there music to take me over?
It's the drum line. Are we voting on that?
Uh, just real quick, I just want to let, I know where, and I just wanted to point out that I, I attended the sports awards presentation last week. Um, always exciting in the fall. That's why some play football. It's always going to be there. But I, I, I did comment to my wife at the time, it's always great to see the amount of, like, high-performance scholar athletes you do have. Um, the amount of kids that, that do, uh, seniors as well as the, the underclass who are, are high on a roll as well as on a roll, uh, standing on that stage and enlisted in the program. You could forget what's supposed to be in the program. Um, but between the, the academics and the, the, you know, the sports as well. I mean, we, we do very well here and our Ramapo Ridge families should be, you know, should, should know well that, that the Mawa High School has a lot to offer in terms of academics and sports and other things outside of sports, but especially the academics. And they should take heed of that before they make any decisions for the kids going between eighth and ninth grade. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the plug.
We're going to send all the prospective academy students to you for the talking to.
I'm glad we have the conversations.
They don't recruit.
That's right, no they don't.
Yes, and quickly, I just wanted to say congratulations to all the staff that we recognized. And I can say from personal experience, because my children had, um, and new Patty Simons, Bob Rufo, Linda Walter, I mean Walter. So again, fantastic. And I think the highlight is really exciting. And it's exciting to see the great staff that we have in this district. So thank you for putting it together.
And to put it in perspective, there were two people tonight that, that you haven't had as good.
Okay. No, you too.
I was on the board of hire, Patty Simon, back in the day. You all did a row.
Good stuff. Great, great night. Um, okay, may I have a motion to move old business, please? Mrs. Conoco, followed by, uh, seconded by Mr. Gallo.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morty.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Thank you.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to take, um, a motion to move new business personnel, A through N. Oh, no, sorry. Let's do, let's do one first. Sorry. Trying to push things along. Uh, fifteen, new business, A through Z, and a motion to move on that, please.
I have to change my vote. I wasn't here.
Okay.
I have to abstain.
Have stayed.
I apologize.
Well, I mean, you can vote. Thank you.
So A through Z, Ms., uh, Dr. Morty, and seconded by Mr. Kizmarski. Any questions, concerns, comments?
I just had a quick question on, uh, T, the two thousand nineteen twenty district calendar. Um, it looks like we've added a day onto Memorial Day weekend.
We did.
A Friday.
We did.
Elaborate on that.
We did. I'd be more than happy to. We did add the day onto Memorial Day weekend because what we found over the last two years, I'm hoping this year is different, is that we've utilized our four snow days pretty early. So when we had the ability based on how the calendar was rolling out, we chose to add it. Uh, because then it will become the first that we take away before we go into that April week. So we had the opportunity to add an extra day, which gave everyone an extra day off, but gave us a day to take off or bring the staff back in and leave the April break, uh, break in. So I'm glad you brought that up, but that was a conscious decision on our part. One more time.
Thank you.
Since we've already had a snow day in November.
We're not talking about that.
I'm just praying to the snow gods. What am I?
What's it looking like for tomorrow?
I have tickets to see Hamilton tomorrow night here.
Yes, you are, Peter. It's going to be a little bit.
Okay, we'll get your card call.
Okay, so, uh, fifteen A to Z, we have a motion by Dr. Morty, seconded by Mr. Kizmarski. Um, Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morty.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Uh, I abstain fifteen A, check number nine three two three eight. And on fifteen L, my vote is present.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, except on fifteen A, I abstain from check numbers nine three zero five six, nine three one eight three, and nine three two six four.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes, I'm all.
And Ms. Baron.
Bless you.
I'd like a motion to move new business, um, A through NN. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Mr. Cohen. Any comments, questions on any of these items? Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the volunteers that we have. Uh, Mr. Joseph Charles, who's volunteering to be the advisor for the film club, filmmaking club, the new filmmaking club. Um, Michael Sasson, uh, Sasson, uh, he's volunteer advisor for the indoor T-Bird percussion drum line. We passed that this evening. And Mr. Michael Wong, who's a volunteer for the robotic sessions and competitions. So thank you very much for, anyone that volunteers for our school business, we really, really appreciate it.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morty.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
And Ms. Baron.
Yes. Public questions are common, so this section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes.
Evelyn Slockbauer, forty-three Thunderhead Place. Um, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that I requested a copy of the library curriculum. And for first through third grade, in the library curriculum, it does state that, um, there should allow, hold on, I'll regive exactly. Allow for sufficient time for children to complete their weekly book exchange. That's for the first, second, third grade. For the fourth, and I believe the fifth grade curriculum, it said that to, that for the children to be able to evaluate their own ability to select resources that are engaging and appropriate for personal interests and needs. Um, I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention because I don't know if you've looked over the entire thing. And I also just wanted to make a note that, um, I requested this from Kyle. And because we're going to this whole technology thing, um, he told me they had to print it out. I paid for my printed out copy, but if we're truly going to technology, we could have done a Google Docs and I could have gotten this out of Google Docs. Thank you.
Good eve, good evening. John Faison, twenty thousand court, Mawa, New Jersey. Tonight's a great night, you know? It's a night of recognition of a lot of people who are very special in the schools. And I wish the twenty-six thousand people in Mawa would be able to come and fill this place up many times over and see what happens at a meeting like this where this recognition takes place. And it's really very, very good. Uh, and I would like to add my own contribution, my own two cents, because at the last council meeting, there was a young gentleman from the high school. And he, he did a great job in presenting to the council two items that were on his agenda. And he did it with poise. Good word that I learned today. Good, with poise, confidence, respect. And it was really very nice to see a young seventeen or eighteen-year-old gentleman or young man get up in front of the council and the mayor and do what he did. And if that's typical of the high school students in Mawa, bravo. It's, it's really wonderful. Um, he got his two points across and then, uh, he waited. He started at seven o'clock. And he waited until eleven o'clock to, to make his remarks during the second public session. Um, really great. So, uh, that's all I have to say. And, um, this gentleman is, um, the, I gotta mention his name, Austin Ritter.
Yes.
And he was just a showstopper two weeks ago. And Mr. Gallo is shaking his head because we were both sitting there and...
I wasn't sitting. I watched.
Yeah, well. But it was really nice to see.
He was, he was fantastic.
Yeah.
He really was. He put on a great case for the, uh, traffic light.
The traffic light and the noise pollution.
That as well.
You know, he, he did a good job and, uh, you don't see that often.
And if he...
Thank you.
And if he were to come to one of our meetings, he would not have to sit here that long in the session.
Yes.
And, uh, happy happy now. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Yes, so you too. See you next year.
Hi, I'm Matthew Slockbauer, forty-three Thunderhead Place. Um, I'm a student at Mawa High School. And currently, the laptops that are provided to us in class are often very slow and don't always function the way we expect them to. I just want to make sure that when the, uh, one-to-one laptop plan is put into play, that the, uh, devices provided to us are going to function at a, um, at a speed that we will be able to use them and that all the programs on them are going to function properly.
Matthew, you did a wonderful job asking your question. And you were right about everything that you're saying at the high school. Currently, we have about four different models, um, of laptops working at the high school now. So our hope, we can't guarantee, but our hope is that they will operate ninety-nine point nine percent better because they will be brand new and all the same. We're working on the backend as far as the infrastructure is concerned, so that connectivity works out well. And as far as all the programs, we'll do the very best we can because we want the very best for all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And to that point, Matt, I heard the same complaint before I left for this meeting from my son, who is going to be a senior next year as well, so I'm well aware.
Hi, everyone. My name is Janine Jansen and I'm here tonight with my husband, friend Jansen. And we've been living in Mawa for four years at one-two-nine East North Road in Mawa. We have three children and we were attracted to this neighborhood because of the wonderful schools. Our oldest is six years old. He started kindergarten at Betsy Ross last year in a room of fourteen children. He is now in a room with twenty-five children and I have many concerns about this. So tonight I wanted to come and express my concern and ask that the board consider having a lower recommendation, a lower amount of children. I realize the New Jersey law is twenty-five. But having my child go from fourteen to twenty-five has affected him. I, the feedback I get from working with the principal and the, and the teacher is that he's a good child. He kind of sits in the middle of the pack. He doesn't call much attention to himself. He's a good boy. He's behind in reading and math. And I'm taking measures to do that and working very closely with Dr. Broganero's teacher. And I think they're very highly skilled. So this feedback is not based on their individual performance or how they're working with me. My feedback is that we are in an excellent school district. And to have twenty-five children in the class, and I hear the feedback that it's in the other school district, that greatly concerns me. I've spoken with the other moms. Some of the other moms say that their child's not challenging them, they're bored. Or the other spectrum, they're struggling, they don't know all of the, all of their classmates' names. So I wanted to come and just story tell that a little bit, to really make it authentic and real of what they're experiencing in the room, that I'm sure his teacher's a little stressed dealing with twenty-five children. I am not an educator, so I'm not here to say, you know, what's the best practice? But from my research, it seems like eighteen is a really great classroom size. Probably not realistic with budget concerns. So I just want to put that out there that I have realistic expectations. But I do think going into the year with twenty-four, twenty-five in a room, it greatly disappoints me from being here. So I just ask that you consider that. And when you look at the next year, I realize it should be sailed on this year, right? I understand that. My ask isn't for a, let's change it, fix it now. They're doing measures to help in the room and take them out, break them out, and I appreciate that. But my ask is that you consider this for next year. Consider bringing it down for everyone. We want our children to succeed and it's directly correlated that smaller classroom sizes helps. So that's my appeal to you, to all of you. I'm sure you're aware.
I, I am. I am very aware and you may not be an educator. I am, I am very aware, and you may not be an educator, but you are incredibly articulate and speak right from the heart as far as your child is concerned. And so I would like to give you a little bit of background, if I may, as well as the board, because we are aware. There's no doubt about it. There were three kindergarten classes last year at Betsy Ross. They have 14, 15, and 50, all right? So you're still as part of the 42.
Right on target.
Absolutely. So going into the summer, we had two move-ins. So the kindergarten class, the kids are going up to first, so we went up to 15, 15, 60. So we let the summer play out, because the summer is when a lot of people tend to move in across the board in all grade levels, primarily in the younger grades. In August, we had 46 students, and we made the decision on August 14th with Dr. Bavino and the central office staff, the day before the classes went live with 46 students, that we were going to go down to two sections at 23, 23. And you made reference to other schools in the district having a 21, 22, 23, and we do go through years like that. So we made the decision to go to 23. On August 15th, we made the decision on 14th, right, Dr. Bavino?
Yes.
Ah, thank you. I know what she was going to say, so I'm not putting out the spot. On August 15th, we received two move-in students and had two sections now of 24, 24, and it's August 15th. Again, we've run classes at 24 before. But what we said to ourselves at the end of the summer was, in September, we're going to meet as a central office staff with Dr. Bavino, and we're going to determine what's going on with this class and whether or not additional support is needed. And in September, we went ahead and did that, and you know that.
Yes.
Because in September, the board approved upon our recommendation two paras to be placed into the classroom. Now, not only were they two paras placed into the classroom, but they are New Jersey teacher licensed paras placing in the classroom.
And we appreciate it.
No, which is a good thing, right? Because we knew with the 24, right, that we were in a very important year. The first grade is a very important year, regardless of where a child sits academically. So we're sitting at 24, we've got the two paras, we're a little higher than normal, but we know that we've got two certified people in the classroom. And then the year unfolds. And on December 10th.
Yes.
We get one more student to move in. And so one of those two classes becomes 25, 24. So we meet with Dr. Bavino again, so I could say we are aware. We meet with Dr. Bavino again, and we really have two choices, and the board probably knows what they are. Choice one is that we split our first grade into three sections. So we take 29 students, 25 and 24, 24 and 24, that have kind of lived with each other since August, and we take them out and we remove them, and we put them with another teacher. Choice number two is that we remain as we are now with two certified teachers in the classroom. It is our choice and our professional opinion that remaining where we are right now is the best thing that we can do for the children, instructionally, academically, and at this point in their lives socially. Which brings me to the last part. Is it something that we can certainly consider? Yes, 25 is the number. Yes, the State Department tells us kindergarten 25 is the number. Can we take a look at it? We absolutely can. And in a perfect world, we want smaller class sizes. 14 is a lose.
A little small.
Right. But sometimes you don't know when you're on that quarter where you're ending at 22, 22, 22, if you get another student, we allow some room for cushion, but it's not a perfect size. What I can tell you is that we've taken this seriously since the beginning of the summer and are not going to stop.
So, thank you. I appreciate all the background. Bit of a culture shock for them, and I appreciate it, and I see why you made the decision you did. To me, this is a first-world problem, but it's something that together we can solve.
We can.
And make it better the next time.
We can work to see what we can do to make it better next time, and we always will, and we always do.
Thank you.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. I'll make this quick so I can tell Ben's getting a little antsy, it's getting close to noon clock.
To be honest with you, Mr. De Silva.
I can see it from that side. Brett Coughlin, 31 Franklin Street. I'm here to talk about playgrounds, and I'll make it real quick. The issue of playgrounds at GW at Betsy Ross have been brought up over the years. I'm asking the Facilities Committee to take a real serious look at it. Our HSO secretary, Anne Pally, has provided, and Dr. Shum can attest, probably a stack...
I have it all.
Yeah, of environmental information about the rubber chips that are used. But I wanted to bring up two additional points. These rubber chips are absolutely disgusting. We had one mother come into an HSO meeting with stained clothes, permanently stained clothes. I can't imagine what these kids are doing with their hands during recess or whatever. The second point is, these playgrounds were built way back when, when we did not have full-day kindergarten. The five-year-olds, the six-year-olds were not out there for recess, were not playing in our playgrounds during school hours, obviously. I'm also asking the Facilities Committee to look at the equipment we have there. Is it appropriate for kindergarten-age kids? I can tell you from the GW perspective, we have a great playground, but there's probably a certain pieces of equipment that I probably wouldn't feel comfortable putting a five- or six-year-old on. So just as a request from the GW community, excuse me, I'm asking Facilities to please look at it in a serious way, and hopefully maybe we can get it on the docket to be done this coming summer, so at least we could see it maybe completed by September of '19.
The Facilities Committee did speak about this last night. It has been on their radar for the last couple of years. We have done a lot of background information as far as how much it would cost to do, because GW is not the only surface playground with the rubber material. I can tell you that it is not a cheap proposition for the board, it is one that they would need to budget and roll out based on the age of what those playgrounds look like. But it is on their radar, they discussed it on Monday evening. They will have the costs reviewed with them again as far as what it looks like, what the rollout looks like. GW does happen to be the oldest of our playground surfaces, so it would be quite likely that if the board were to consider moving this forward, they would do it with the age of the playground, which would make GW first. I asked Kyle if he would kindly place the equipment that Mr. Moore was talking about as part of the discussion for Facilities.
Great.
Are you good?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?[1795.34]